Hey, it's 6 o'clock, so we will call this meeting to order for Tuesday, February 14th, Valentine's Day. Please help yourself. Mary brought these for anyone and everyone. If we don't eat them, she won't bring them anymore. We could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
We have public comment on agenda items. Don't be bashful. Yes, Frank?
Before we start the public comment, I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the principals' report for this evening.
The reading of them? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion? All in favor? Because the meeting may go a little long. That's all. Public comment? Hi, Hattie. Is that, is that mic on? Yup, it is.
So I've spoken to a lot of you, and as you know, my son was threatened about three weeks ago at school, and I just don't feel that enough has been done to handle it. At first, it wasn't, it was taken very serious, and then it kind of just went away. He lets me know every day that the child is there with him at recess, and he just watches him. He's also let me know that he's supposed to have an aide with him, the other child, and he does not. He doesn't feel safe. I mean, a threatening act is a form of bullying. There was no bullying report done. There's been no consequences. I just feel like the board should maybe look at their policies and review them and change them before something happens.
I'll just ask a couple of questions. I'm assuming that you spoke with the principal?
Yup.
Okay. Assuming you spoke with Dr. Costa?
Yup.
Okay. We're in. And did you have anything else, Hattie?
Um, I mean, I'm, I don't want to say anything bad about anyone. Dr. Costa did send out an email, which was great. It had tons of information in it. But it shouldn't have taken seven days for her to send out an email to notify all the parents. She should have done it immediately. Parents want to know things like that. And I know that lots of other parents had made phone calls with their concerns, so I think it was kind of just an email to make people feel better. But it's something that should have been addressed immediately.
I'm not thinking we, oh, thank you.
I'm sorry, Amber.
I'm not thinking we would do that in public.
Right, you can't do it in public. You have to schedule a non-public hearing.
Hattie, did you want to have a meeting, not in public, but with the board?
Um, with the board or with the other child's family?
No, I don't anticipate it would be with the other, but with the board.
Um, I mean, I'm not sure what you would do about it, so I wouldn't be against that.
Our hands are a little bit tied now because we're in a public session, and we can't really say much about students' names and the specifics and whatever. But I'm hearing that you just want us, along with Dr. Costa, to take a good look at the board policies?
Yes. I just don't want it to continue to happen. It's not the first time he, the other child's made a threat like that. So I just think before he actually acts on something, we should prevent it from happening.
Okay. Well, we can do that in a, in a non-public, but I'll leave it the way it is for now, and we will go into a non-public and, and discuss it.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Anyone else?
If we, if we go into a non-public to discuss it, how do we understand where she, where the mother's coming from, what Dr. Costa did, what the principal did? How do we get all that if we don't get it from the person that did it? We go by some, what somebody else tells us? Is there a written report about this?
I would assume that a written report was filed. If there, there is, if you want to jump in.
Yeah, I'm happy to do so. So obviously, that, I did offer that for you. I'm happy to do that. And I think if we go into non-public, you would, I would have all the documents that would detail what was done, and I could share that with you, is what I could do, on behalf of the school and the district, so that at least you would know what the steps were that were taken and, and how, and what transpired. I think that, you know, I do understand that this happened on a Thursday, and, and I'm not, I don't want to get into all the details, but I was only made aware of it on a Tuesday, and we had, we had notification out to people on Friday. So people know that, obviously, when we work through any situation, especially given the sensitive matter of dealing with children, the goal is always around how do we restore the relationship? How do we help all children? How do we make sure that people are safe? And I can, I can assure you that we worked very thoroughly and diligently with the SRO in the building, as well as was in contact with the chief, Chief of Police, Alex Reno, as well. In fact, meeting with them on Thursday, and then really wanted to be thorough in what we did. So I would say that, given the fact that, only aware of it, I think because it went to my administrative assistant, there was a little bit of delay in my getting involved. But I think, Hattie, you, you called the board, and I, I called you right then and there. I was, we were having a conversation that afternoon, and unfortunately, we cannot always share the details of what happens in a situation like this. Is that because it is confidential? These, these are children? And, but I can assure you, and I believe Chief Reno would assure you if he were here, that no stone was left unturned. So I, I feel confident that we could do this, you know, as expediently as you wish it to be. But again, we would, again, have to follow all laws of FERPA, because that is what I am held to as the superintendent of schools. But like I said, I'm sorry that you felt that, you know, learning about it on Tuesday and notification on Friday was not soon enough. But again, I was following my lead from SRO and the Chief of Police. So I would say that we wanted to make sure that we fully understood the situation before we could put out the information that we did.
So I think my only question is, if there was a formal report done, isn't the school supposed to provide me with a copy of it in accordance to your bullying policies?
So we, and I, I think we would have to go into non-public about that, and we would probably have to have Mr. Sadler walk us through that and to share specifically where that landed.
Okay.
Again, that, I, that, I know, I, it's hard to, to speak only because it is, it's a sensitive subject that does involve children.
But I, I think, I think Hattie's question is, per our own policy, don't both parents have to?
Well, again, I-
Be notified with attendees.
Mr. Sadler, I don't know if you want to comment. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I-
I didn't. And you'll understand why.
I did not investigate this. I, I don't even want to know if I can disclose this type of information. I'll be honest with you. Like, we are skating a very fine line right now. And I am not, to be honest with you, willing to risk my job or my career or my licensure in New Hampshire to skate this fine line. There are certain things I can disclose, not only in a public board session, but to anyone. Just like I couldn't talk about Mrs. Abrams' child to any other child or any other parent in our school, I cannot talk about any of the students involved. I did fully investigate this, but I didn't look at it as bullying, because it was not going to meet the criteria for bullying per our own policy. So I took our other disciplinary avenues and the policies and practices, the protocols that we've always followed at Marston School, and that is how I investigated it. And all of our resources were utilized, both within the school and outside of it, because of similar meetings Dr. Costa had with officials from the town, I also had those meetings and had shared in-depth information with them about what we were doing. If we want to disclose a report to Dr. Costa about what happened and the end result, because I think there's a lot of information that people aren't aware of, and that information is skewing their, their vision or perception of what actually transpired within our school walls.
More public comment?
So I have a copy of your bullying policy with the criteria of what the definition of bullying is, so I'm just confused as why it wouldn't fall under these things.
I think we need to go into non-public.
Yeah.
I do.
I think that would probably-
Yep, to talk, I mean, to talk about the incident in any detail. We cannot talk about, if it only involves your child.
So I, I mean, I haven't mentioned anyone else's name. I haven't even mentioned my own son's name.
No, correct. But we cannot have a discussion about another child?
We're not gonna.
Particularly with their parents not here.
That's right. Right.
In public.
We're not gonna. All she wants to do is tell her side of the incident that happened. You just can't mention who or what.
I haven't mentioned anyone's name.
Yep.
I would accept a motion.
I move to go into non-public.
I second.
Okay. Do you know the RSA?
RSA 93. I don't know if it's-
F, semicolon, three.
Yeah.
Is it a different one?
Okay. Roll call vote, Frank?
It's on your thing.
Wendy?
Aye.
So folks, we're gonna go into non-public. Okay, we are back in session. Continuing with public comment?
Not to beat a dead horse, but I'm gonna read this because I'm understanding of the sensitive nature of this, but I just want to make sure everybody is aware that, you know, what happened a couple weeks ago is not an isolated incident, okay? This is something that has been going on now for two years, and I know that because my daughter was in class with this student last year. And there wasn't, when I say there wasn't a week, it's more like there wasn't a day that didn't go by where I didn't hear about emotional outbursts, acts of violence, in-your-face yelling. Some of it was directed at her, some of it was directed at other students, some of it was directed at teachers. One particular serious incident, a lot of the students came home crying in tears, and parents had to be called because of a very serious chair-throwing incident in the library. All right? Parents have called the school with concerns last year. I can't speak for this year. I, on several occasions, both this year and last year, have made my own comments about my daughter's safety, and this continued for the whole year. The response was that we were going to make sure that these students in this class were not put in the same class as this student in question going into fifth grade. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, that's not really addressing the situation. That's subjecting another 20 students to this type of behavior and this type of fear, as well as with parents. I understand that every child here deserves an education, but I think we need to be able to do that while we're also keeping other students safe. And I think what we need to do is really start asking some serious questions. And some of those questions, I'm wondering, is, do we have the resources to address this child's needs? Based on where we are today, what I experienced last year, and what I still to this day hear on almost a daily or weekly basis, I'm gonna say we don't. So that leaves us with a few difficult choices, but ones that I think we have to ask and answer honestly. I think we need to either find the resources to deal with this, seek out the resources to deal with this, or find an alternative environment that will address the needs of this child and allow them to thrive, and also allow other students in the school to continue learning in a safe and positive environment. I'm really afraid that if we don't do more, someone's gonna be seriously hurt. What's gonna happen next year when this child enters middle school? Are we gonna be dealing with the same thing with perhaps a bigger child who's stronger? I've already heard from two families that are contemplating removing themselves from this district, and either putting them somewhere else or homeschooling them. And I'm just wondering, like, how many more of this do we have to go through before we start really taking a look at it? So that's the only thing I want to say. It's like-
Could you do us a favor?
Sure.
Could you please ask any parent that has a problem with this child or their child's academic to call either Dr. Costa, Principal Sadler, or Assistant Principal Henderson?
Sure, I can, I can-
Please ask them to.
Yeah. I mean, I'm sure a lot of them are probably watching tonight, so if they're listening, I would encourage them to, to call. I know some parents called last year after several of the incidents that have happened.
Yeah.
But yeah, I'll make sure that, you know, if people are aware of some, that they make the call. Okay, thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, we'll close public comment, and we'll go to Board Member Updates. Budget Committee, Mr. DeLuca?
Uh, nothing to report.
Building Facilities, Andrea? Curriculum, Andrea? Wendy? No?
I just know that the teams at each building are working on reviewing, revising, aligning the curriculum standards, et cetera, for both math and language arts. So that work is just continuing on.
Uh, School Boards Association, nothing. Policies, Ginny, Wendy? We're gonna be looking at some?
We have policies to look at tonight.
Uh, PTA, Wendy?
Let's see, we have the Harlem Wizards coming up on April 3rd at 5:30, and I believe the eighth graders are gonna have a stand bake sale, something along those lines, to raise money for their eighth-grade trip. Party on the Park is coming up. There is a design contest to design a new SAU 90 sort of spirit gear logo that is being coordinated with the, the art teachers at each of the three schools. And can we talk about enrichment and the changes to enrichment? Is this an appropriate place?
Sure.
So the PTA increased their enrichment budget, and so each of our three schools is gonna be receiving $15,000 from the PTA for enrichment this year, which we're very excited about.
Okay. And then we have dispensed with the principals' reports. However, Mr. Lannan, if you have anything outside of your report that you want to highlight? No? Mr. Sadler, anything outside of your report? No? Mr. Hawkins, anything outside of your report?
No.
Dr. Napton?
Rex from the Pre-K Task Force? Yes, I just have a couple of things to mention about the Pre-K Task Force that I was gonna mention at my report. So as you know, we are meeting monthly, and I just wanted to put a couple of recommendations before the board that we are, would like to move forward with, and you can certainly think about it. But one of them is to add the name Early Childhood Preschool Program to our programming so that we can expand the least restrictive environment for our special ed kids and invite more community students to join the program. So those are some recommendations that we are looking forward to, if that would please the board.
Do you need a motion for that?
I, I think it would be nice if we could have a motion. I want to let Ginny weigh in, because she is on the committee, and her voice is, is-
Well, why don't we get a-
It's quite loud at times.
Why don't we get a, why don't we get a motion first, and then we'll discuss it? Ginny, do you want to make the motion?
I'm not making that motion.
You're not making that motion?
I'm not making that motion.
Okay? Does anybody want to make the motion?
Sure, I'll make the motion.
Wendy? Second? Frank? Discussion? Ginny?
And this is welcome to all students in Hampton will be included in the classrooms? All four-year-old children will be included in the classroom, or are you doing a lottery system where some children will be chosen?
So at this point, we don't know how many kids we will have, so we will open it to anyone who's available to come in, and yes, we have, we are recommending for next year that we do a lottery system, a rolling lottery, so it doesn't ever close, so it always, there's always people coming in, and we're always doing the lottery.
So you have four classes of 12 children per student classroom, right?
Yes.
Okay, so that's 48 children. Half of those will be special needs spots, so you'll have 24 openings for the fourth, four-year-olds of Hampton?
Yes. What? Yeah, at full, yeah, at full capacity, yes.
At, that's at full capacity. Right now, right now, we're running at 20 total.
Yes-ish, yep.
So, um, you have 29? Okay, well, on the report, it said 29.
Yeah, right.
Twenty and nine.
That's right.
Okay.
Look at the report. Yep.
Okay, so you're gonna allow 24 student, four-year-old students who can attend school for 2.5 hours?
We are, yes. We are attempting to run a pilot program next year to, without asking for funding. This is how we are trying to move forward, yes.
How do you presently pay for your preschool program?
It's a special ed program funded by the, the budget, the Board of Ed budget.
Okay.
Founded on by the taxpayers. We, we provide the teachers, and it's at Center School, and it's a fully special education program at this point. It's only for students who are identified. So as you know, we're trying to expand it. It's a challenge, there's no doubt about that. It is going to cost money at some point down the road, but next year, we, we have not asked for funding, and we need to wait till the year after to get it on the Warren article and have all the recommendations. So we have found a way that we believe is a good starting point for us to try to expand our programming and invite a few more students into the preschool programming.
So those 24 students that are coming from the four-year-old community in Hampton will have to pay tuition to this preschool?
Yep. Yes.
Okay. Um, all right, so if you have to work, is there transportation to this program for people who are incomes tuition students?
So at this point, we do not have transportation connected to the program.
So it would have to be to a parent that is able to have their child in a two-and-a-half-hour program, be able to transport the child, and be able to pay tuition?
At this point, that's what we're looking at for next year, yes, to start to expand it, yep.
Thank you.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Maybe that might help to our thinking. Can Dr. Napton, Dr. DeSylva Napton, can you explain why there is a benefit to having more Friendship students? Why is that the recommendation from the state? Because I think that is, that's kind of was the intermediate step that came down from the state. So could you explain that?
Sure. So the reason why we started this task force was because when we program for students with disabilities, we always want to have peer role models around them. So when you program just for students with special needs, and you have a room that just has special needs students in it, then it, it doesn't allow them to grow as much as if they had peer role models. So we do have some, a couple of peers in each classroom, but because our special ed numbers are so high at the preschool, and we've already, as you know, expanded to two teachers just a few years ago, we have maxed out our special education programming, and we want to be able to allow more community peers to be together with our students. We also will have an ability with four classrooms for educational programming. If a student has a higher special education need or a mild special education need, we will be able to place them with different peers at different levels, because right now, we don't have options. We have our two preschools, and anyone who's identified goes in those two rooms, and we differentiate within those classrooms to accommodate the needs of the students. But this would allow us to have more students, more peer role models, and a larger continuum of services for our students with special education needs to access.
So, and this is another thing for us to think about. Obviously, our hope and dream, to your point, Mrs. Bridle, is to really, at some point, would we want to go and offer this to all of our four-year-olds down the road? Right? That's the conversation that we've had at these meetings, and we know to do that, it's going to require some, lots of, first off, money, because we would have to think about what that looks like in terms of classroom spacing, classroom design, transportation, lunches, all the things that preschools need. And on top of that, would there be daycare? Obviously, daycare is part of a preschool program, so you have to include all of that. We're really not ready to do that based on the budget we have. So our feeling was, either we're making an intermediate step, or we're holding off. I think, would you say that's fair to say?
Yes, that's exactly what we're trying to do, is, and make an intermediate step. And just for, you know, visioning, there have been lots of conversations with our district, with, we've had one conversation with the Master Planning Committee. We are in conversation with SAU 21. There are some big visions that are out there to include all of these things that we want to include, and I'm just really excited that the visioning is there. It's gonna take, we have to take steps. We have to take baby steps. And this is our intermediate step to, to start to expand our programming without a financial cost just for next year.
Right. So it's, it's really, it's something we have to be very thoughtful of. So as much as, you know, I, I feel like you, we talked about this at the beginning, that we really, if we're going to offer up a program, we wanted to make it available and accessible for, for everyone. That was really our hope and dream when we began, but unfortunately, to do that, it means holding off at least a year, because there's a lot to work out.
So you have a committee that's meeting?
Yes, yep, we meet monthly, and the minutes are in your packet.
So is, is this request coming directly from that committee?
Yes. And the reason I'm bringing it up now is because we just met on Friday, this past Friday. The minutes you have in your packet are from last month, and I didn't want to wait a month to ask for this, because if we are gonna do this, now is the time that we need to advertise to let the, the community members know that there'll be a few more slots in our preschool than have, there have been in the past. So we need to reach out, do our child find. We have, you know, fairs and screenings and lots of things to do, and we also wanted to make sure that the name got out there, so Early Childhood Preschool Program, ECPP.
I have a question.
Wendy?
If you don't mind. How have we been selecting the Friendship students in the past?
So it, that's a great question. They, it is like a first-come, first-served. And then when we're, we have a waiting list, and when we can't accept them, right now, what do we have, six or eight? I could look at my report, just to make sure.
Nine. Sounds like, sounds like nine, yeah.
Friendship kids, okay.
Yes, 29 minus 20 is nine.
There you go.
Yeah.
It says, there you go.
Well, and I guess my other question is, I'm gonna ask Ginny this question. How many preschools are within the, the city limits of Hampton right now?
Right now?
Mm-hmm.
There is one preschool.
One. Okay. So, and, and how many of those are free?
Uh, only one.
Okay. So these, the students, so the additional students that would be going next year, where would they be going if they were not going here, going for a partial day, paying tuition? They would, in theory, be going either staying home or going to a daycare?
Yes.
To a preschool, paying tuition, if they have daycare, paying extra for the daycare?
Yep, yep.
Right.
Correct.
Right now, you don't have anywhere that will take a part-time preschool.
So I was just pointing out that this is not what we want, but it is a start, and there are kids who can benefit from it next year, even if it's not all of the kids we want to benefit from it. They are talking at the state level about studying full-time, state-sponsored preschool. We're kind of getting in- We're kind of getting in a little, a little ahead of that. We all remember how long it took to get, um, to get the, uh, full-day kindergarten. Took, took a long time and took a lot of money.
Yep.
So we got, I don't know, I feel like we have to start somewhere.
There are some grant opportunities coming available again soon for this exact fund process.
Have you looked at federal funding grants?
Well, that, yes, exactly. There, as a matter of fact, I'm going to a workshop this week on that. There is a grant, a large competitive grant coming out that we're teaming with SAU 21 to, to look at writing. But yes, we're looking at funding.
Grant that could offset the cost.
It absolutely can.
Expand your program?
Mm-hmm, absolutely. We are looking into that and we are applying for one, a grant coming up very soon.
Further discussion?
I, I would just strongly recommend to all parents out there, and it doesn't even have to be parents, anybody out there, that you need to talk, you need to call and write to the state legislators and you need to let them know. And the federal, I mean, senators, you, you just need to let them know, this is not acceptable. This early childhood care and education is, we're, we're just, we've gone beyond critical mass on this. And the only way anything's going to happen is if people call the alleged people in power and say, hey, it's time, you need to do something now. So I would highly recommend people call, write, email, do anything you can to especially our state legislators.
Further discussion? Do we have a number of how many, uh, four-year-olds are in Hampton, an approximate number?
So that's what we need to do right now is reach out. It's, you know, it's February coming up on March, so we wanted to be able to go ahead and start reaching out. That's why we're recommending this right now. So no, we don't have a solid number. We can certainly go back to our NASDAQ reports and kind of look at births and. But we're getting the word out. That's what we're doing. We need to get the word out right now and say, hey, guess what? We're going to have a few more slots for your four-year-olds. Talk to us.
Further discussion?
A hundred. You, you know what I mean? That's the average class size right now.
Yeah.
Okay. We have a motion, uh, I don't know who made the motion. Was Frank?
I think.
Okay.
Seconded.
For the name change, correct? The name change.
And, and more community slots.
Yeah.
Those are the two recommendations. Well, and it's not a change, it's an addition. Don't, we don't want to give up our special ed programming, so we're adding, we're adding the name, Early Childhood Preschool Programming, and we're adding community slots. More community slots than what we have. We used to call them Friendship. We'd like to call them Community Slots.
And are we 100% committed at this point that those slots will be given out by lottery? Because I think that's one of the issues.
That was the, that's what the team voted on. The task force voted and had a lengthy discussion on this on Friday. And we did make that decision that for next year, that's how we would do it. And years to come, we'll see, but in the moment, that's, we needed a way to choose and that's what we decided.
Further discussion? Ready for the question? Okay, Frank's motion, which you just summed up. All in favor? Opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Lassard, anything?
Good evening and Happy Valentine's Day to everyone.
You too.
I just want to let the public know that we still are in need of a full-time custodian within the Hampton School District. And we are starting early interviews for summer hires. So if anybody is interested in a good summer job, please apply here at SAU 90. And we are looking for a full-time custodian. Thank you all very much.
Why do I think we'll be hearing that in August?
Yeah.
We may. Stay tuned. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Mary? By the way, Mary, thank you. Nobody's eating them.
Thank Dr. Costa because it was her thoughtfulness on Valentine's Day to bring treats. So team effort, we got them here. Her, her idea, her thoughts. Anyway, Happy Valentine's Day. So I know last meeting, Les, you've been asking about the summer feeding programs.
Yes.
So I got in touch with the state and they got back to me and it's, there's no new programs. The state Nutrition Director said they have not heard from USDA or haven't gotten any communication on any new feeding programs for the summer, period. So if, if so, I'll keep, keep my eye out, but there's nothing new going on. So that's that. And anything else? I mean, I kind of put a little report together to show you the numbers. If you looked at it for the last six years, just because I was asked about before COVID, what were our numbers after COVID, during COVID. So that was my little report. And that's.
So the numbers that you provided, which I believe are on page 28 here, that was all funded by the federal government?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess in 2022, the reimbursement was somewhere in the neighborhood of almost $84,000?
Yes. And the, you know, the reason being, we were getting reimbursed for every student free.
That was for the year, though.
For the whole year.
Now.
Because there's levels. We get, um, I don't, it's just, I wrote it down. So there's levels of reimbursement. So for free children, we get $3.64 for lunch, $2.29 for breakfast. Those are for free students. So we were getting, when you're doing almost 600 kids, we were getting a chunk of change for COVID. And now that we're back, it's that same rate, but we only get reimbursed for paid students, $0.85 for lunch and $0.53 for breakfast. So when you, we're in a category of almost reaching 14% free and reduced, that's, that's the big difference.
How has it impacted, uh, students?
Um, you know.
I mean, do you have kids coming to school, missing breakfast, not able to have breakfast? Which is one of the important meals of the day?
I mean, we, Hampton District turns away no one. No one. If they want a breakfast, they're welcome to have a breakfast. If they want a lunch, they're welcome to have a lunch and then we'll figure the rest out. If you're looking on their student debt right now, if that's what you're asking me through the district, right now, the student debt is $4,500, which is more than usual. Usually around March, it's about $2,500. So right now it's $4,500. Hopefully, well, I don't know. So are parents struggling to pay? Looks like it a little bit, so.
Any other questions for Mary?
So we've talked about this a little bit, but if someone wanted to make a donation to clear student debt, I'm assuming they would contact you or contact Mariah?
Absolutely.
Yep. So I think we would happily accept donations if you're interested in helping out students in the district. And Mary would know how to make that happen.
Great, thank you so much. And we are also hiring part-time positions for cafeteria help. Please call, please come in.
If I could just follow up on that, I want to thank the people that have come forward to help pay some of those donations to offset the charges at food service. We received some donations already. So we received some from staff. We received some from our community members. And so just a big thank you to everyone who has so generously given some wonderful donations. So just worth noting that those are coming in and gratefully appreciated.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Dr. Costa?
We have some, um, permission to accept some different checks that we received. So why don't we do those? That's probably important to do. So we have a box top check for sent to school. Tim is seeking permission, $82.60 for center school.
Moved Wendy, seconded Andrea. All those in favor?
Thank you. And then Mr. Sadler is requesting $315 from Hampton PTA to be used for the PTA bucks and student participation in the school store. So $350 from the PTA.
Moved Frank, seconded Andrea.
There's also.
All those in favor?
Sorry. Again, another one from Marsen School, $74.40 from Box Tops for Education. And that's used to help offset enrichment.
Moved Frank, seconded Wendy. All those in favor?
And $200 from the Boston Museum of Science, which has been returned to the field trip account.
Motion? Wendy, seconded Andrea. All those in favor?
Did I get them all? I think I got them all. I can, I won't take up too much time on my report.
It's fine.
You, you saw what's in there. I think the big one is, is that obviously, Mariah and I are making the rounds. We joined the Beach Precinct on February 8th with Mr. DeLuca and had a great event where we were able to go down and speak with them and share information about our warrant articles. So that was just a, a nice way to meet with some of the people down there. We're also planning to go to the PTA on February 21st to speak with them, so we will do that. The other thing that I think I wanted to just bring to everyone's attention is that to be in line with SAU 21, we are going to have the option for remote days if we should get to more than three snow days. We've only had one and a half and this, this week and next week is looking pretty warm, so we may, this may be all for naught, but we would do our three snow days before doing a remote day. Just wanted to get that out to folks so that people were aware, but we would be ready for that if we should have to do that. I guess it just depends what March is going to look like because this week is looking pretty warm. And the other thing I guess I would bring to your attention is that last week, as you know, was School Counselors Week and in my newsletter, I just paid tribute to our school counselors. But also I put out to the community information about hotlines if parents need help or regarding mental health concerns or any concerns they may have with their family or someone they know. They can reach out to those hotlines that we do provide, just to have that on parents' radar. And just a big thanks, obviously, to our mental health team for all that they do. Wanted to just let you know that the leadership team met on January 30th and we all engaged in IS training, which is on Incident Command Systems. So we all took the 100, the 200, and the 700 tests. That is just National Incident Management System Training, which is part of the Emergency Management Institute, or FEMA. And it is part of the U.S. Department of Homeland Security. So we all took those assessments. We all passed those assessments so that, that is updated for another 10 years. So that is completed. And the only other thing I guess I would just remind you of is that we have a geography bee this week on Thursday. We're looking forward to that at the middle school. We know that we have our spelling bee finalists that are off to the regionals to see where they land. They do the written test and then if they do well, they get to go to the state level. So we'll see what happens with that. That would be Alexa McSweeney from Grade 5, Marsen School, and Stella Finnegan, 8th grader from Hampton Academy. Two wonderful offerings for our students and I had the pleasure of joining them. And as you know, and I think, Mrs. Shepherd, you mentioned that our curriculum work does continue in language arts and mathematics in our schools and at the leadership level. And we have New Hampshire Listens that is going to continue their community conversations on March 29th. So just an opportunity to continue to keep the dialogue open specifically around, you know, equity and how we can ensure that we're meeting everyone's needs. And we are looking for, if there's something specifically parents want to talk about, we're happy to, to, to do that as well. But we have a wonderful parent group that is helping to meet with New Hampshire Listens and myself and the leadership team to set up some parameters for that evening. And we did that back in December, right before the holidays. I think it was a great turnout and people were looking for more of that opportunity. So mark your calendars for March 29th. We will do that. And then last but certainly not least, a special thanks to Mariah Curtis, our business administrator, on pulling together our annual report for the 2022-2023 school year. That is available. It is in our SAU offices. It's at the schools. It's also in our town offices. If anyone would like a copy, please be sure to let us know. You can reach out. We'd love to share those. But just, it includes all of the highlights from the year. So that's all I have. Questions? I could, yep. So we do have two letters that we did receive between last week, last month, and this month of plans of retirement. I gave you hard copies for you to look at. Two wonderful staff members who have really given a lot to our schools, particularly Hampton Academy. Dr. Les Masterman, who will be leaving at the end of this year. He has been our school psychologist for the past 14 years at Hampton Academy. And you have his letter for your review and consideration.
I make a motion that we accept both resignations.
Well, why don't we do one at a time? We'll do, we'll do Dr. Masterman's first. Moved Ginny, seconded Andrea. All, all those in favor? Okay, and?
And one that came as a, um, came as a surprise, I guess is what I would say, but completely understand is that Mrs. Hughes met with me today and let me know that after much consideration and as much as she, I know, loves working at Hampton Academy and loves the students and the staff and, but has made the decision that she will be retiring at the end of this year. So obviously, we, we wish her all the best in retirement and I know that she's got a lot that she'll be doing with her family and we'll certainly miss her, but she's done some great work in the past four years through COVID and carrying, carrying that legacy within the students that she's served and all of the staff.
I make a motion that we accept Mrs. Hughes's resignation with regret.
With regret. Second Andrea. Moved and seconded to accept Mrs. Hughes's resignation with regret. Discussion? All those in favor? Official, Bridget.
At, at the end of the year, June 30th. So they'll be with us through the end of the year and we certainly appreciate all of their service to the schools and the students and we appreciate everything that they've done.
Okay. We are not Ken having Student of the Month today.
Amber, did you get Amber?
I, I, well, we didn't do any of the principles.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, go ahead, Ken.
Come back.
The Students of the Month were invited to come and unfortunately weren't able to make it. And I have descriptions for what teachers wrote. I'd like to read those to you, just to tell you who the, who the kids are. So our November Student of the Month that went to the Rotary Club is Madison Bulley. Madison exemplifies every aspect of the academy way. She manages herself in the classroom by always completing her work on time at a high level. In addition, Madison excels in all of her classes. She acts respectfully and responsibly by being a model of good behavior and always giving an excellent effort in the classroom. All of Madison's core teachers have noted a consistent. All of Madison's core teachers have noted a consistent level of positive participation and effort in classes. She respects herself and others by not only getting along well with all of her peers, but by being a leader and clearly someone who everyone looks up to and respects. This fall, Madison has been an invaluable member of the Yearbook Committee. She consistently volunteered to do extra photography assignments on days that the club didn't even meet to ensure that all of our fall sports had pictures in the yearbook. In summary, Madison's positive attitude, excellent work ethic, and academic achievement exemplify the qualities of the Hampton Academy Student of the Month. Our December Student of the Month that was elected to go to the Rotary Club was Andre Mama. Andre demonstrates respect towards himself and others every day at Hampton Academy. He is kind, works hard, and always strives to do his best. The Integrated Arts teachers notice and appreciate that Andre, Andre reaches out to help other students in class when he can. He's a valued member of Shark News and Andre attends news meetings regularly, participates, practices his lines, and works well with others on the team. All teachers appreciate Andre's positive attitude and would like to recognize him for his hard work and dedication to the Hampton Academy community. Now, I also asked the students to let me know what they really love about Hampton Academy and what are some areas that they feel like we could improve on. Andre got back to me and his first response was that he really loves his teachers because they were always so kind and helped him with all of his subjects. He really enjoys his advisory period and especially enjoys the group projects, like decorating the, the doors in December with a slogan. He always likes to be part of the after-school activities, especially Shark News and Cooking Club. One of his favorite activities to take part in is Ski Club. One of the things he felt like we could improve on or a change that he would like to see is he'd like to increase our lunchtime by five or 10 minutes so he could take his time and not have to rush through his meal. We just sent our February Student of the Month to the Rotary and their family went over on Tuesday. So, keep you updated on those.
While we have you. I think you gave us the field trip update.
Yes.
Any board member have any questions on that?
Excellent job to those guys.
I, the, the teachers and everyone who was involved with the fundraising have, in my mind, gone, you know, above and beyond with their time. Last night at the community oven, there were four or five teachers who were there and it was fun for me to go. I, I had takeout for my family, so I went in and got to see a lot of the families and just stopped by. You know, Andre's family was there and I got to sit with people, you know. There are a lot of staff members, Ms. Hughes included, who have put a lot of time into making sure that especially the students who need assistance are, are getting it. So, it's good.
Any other questions for Ken? Thank you. Mary, I guess you already gave us the update, so we're, we're good on that. Mentor program at Marsden?
Well, our intent was to have students and teachers here, but as enticing as a school board meeting on Valentine's Day is, it was difficult to get takers. So, we're gonna talk a little bit about our mentoring program and then we were able with Mrs. Levine and the tech departments helped to create a short five to seven minute video that we'll talk about a little bit. We're just gonna give you a little background on where, how this came about, then we'll kinda switch off and on. When we were returning to school from COVID, on that first year, we put together that huge COVID Task Force, Return to School Task Force. There was people from all over the community on it. And one of the things that the mental health team felt was that a mentoring program would be beneficial for students, you know, as we make connections, kids were isolated, the, the pandemic and all of that stuff. So, we tried it the, the year we were remote, when we were two-day, two-day, A-day, B-day. And we did it every Wednesday and that was part of our, our Wednesday morning virtual routine because students weren't in the building on Wednesdays at all. Eventually, you know, when we returned to school, it kind of fizzled off, but we had a unique opportunity this year within our master's schedule to build in a mentor block. And so, that's what we're gonna talk about a little bit today, but I'll turn it over to Mrs. Henderson to start us off.
Good evening. So, to talk about what the mentor program is and how it was formed, the mentor block, as Mr. Sadler said, takes place once a week on Wednesdays from 1:55 to 2:25. We do have over 315 kids traveling to 37 different locations. So, it's been a lot of training in those routines in the hallway, but they've done a really great job. Every staff member in our building participates. So, we have 37 groups, you know, one group is run by Mr. Sadler and myself, one group is run by two nurses, one group is run by our ESOL teacher, and one even by our OT in speech. So, we've really involved every staff member at our school, which really brings our community together and getting excited about the program. Mixed groups, so in the groups, there's about six to 10 students and there's typically about three-third, three-fourth, and three-fifth in each group. Really, that's been, I think, one of the kids' favorite parts, and you'll see it in the video coming up soon, that they love getting to know other students from different grades and just having those connections throughout the school day. And the goal is to create and foster positive relationships between students and adults as well. And you'll see that in the video, there's a lot of love for exactly what we just talked about, just those relationships with the teachers as well as the students. So, the program's growing really well so far.
I'm not gonna read all of this, but I'll give you the gist. I went to this phenomenal training by Brooklyn Rainey about one trusted adult at the New Hampshire Principals Leadership Academy, and then the New Hampshire DOE started sponsoring this endeavor. And while some of it's geared more towards middle school, some of the big things came out and they were sort of the same things we're looking at in terms of social, emotional learning and mental health. A trusted adult, whether in school or out, is a stable, supportive, and committed adult in a youth life. They're consistent, they're dependable, they offer a level of support. These could be, as we kinda stated, anybody, counselors, teachers, admin, psychologists, social workers, SROs, bus drivers, janitors. It's really anyone that interacts with school-aged children inside or out of school and that children view as a trusted adult, someone that they can go to and they can speak to about issues or things that are going on in their lives. The nice thing too is our school counselor, Ms. Whitney, and our SRO detective Connors, along with Ms. Cruz, who's our PE slash health teacher, also teach trusted adult lessons to our students. So, helping them identify who are those adults that are in a positive, healthy relationship in your life? What does that look like? How do you select them? How do you form those relationships and maintain them? So, it is a big part of our social, emotional learning, but also our health curriculum. We know that building positive relationships that foster a safe, supportive learning environment is a responsibility of everybody. And then we also know that every caring adult plays an important role in building these relationships. And as we discussed earlier, these relationships help kids feel safe and they've helped them feel comfortable. And when students feel safe and comfortable at school, they're able to learn, they're accessible. So, this just gives them someone outside of their classroom teacher that they can go to with issues, ask questions to, connect with. Because if we're truly building a school community, just like a neighborhood, everyone should know everyone. So, while the students obviously know the Integrated Arts teachers, they go there once a week, not everybody works with a Mrs. Chalfy or a Mrs. Nguyen. Not everyone frequents a nurse's office and has that relationship with our nursing staff. So, it, it's very nice that we have a program like this to help foster these relationships in our school. Why do we do it? What are the benefits? There are, as you can read yourselves, countless benefits from this. You know, the, the biggest thing is it's less likely for students to participate in risky or threatening behaviors. If they know they can talk to someone at school, when they're starting to feel a certain way and they're not sure how to deal with that, they have adults that they know they can go to and connect with at school. So, not only do they have their classroom teacher and other professionals, but they have this one person that they really have gotten to know since the beginning of the school year because we started this September, beginning of October, very early. Students who feel connected to school are more likely to succeed, better attendance, grades, and test scores, they stay in school longer. We have students who, you know, never miss a Wednesday even with frequent attendance issues because they know that in the afternoon, they're gonna get to go with their group. And it is not academic-based in nature. It's really about connections with kids. It's about sitting down with them. It might be doing an art project, playing games, doing drawing, going outside, snowshoeing, building snowmen. It's just a way for these kids to get together and connect with each other and connect with the adults. When we focus on creating a safe, healthy, and supportive environment, students are more likely to engage in their curriculum, achieve academically, and develop positive relationships. And research clearly shows that just one trusted adult can have a, a huge influence on a child's life. So, we're trying to create that at Marsden, help foster those relationships with our students. So, we have a, a short video that just highlights, you know, one day, I guess, in a, in a mentor program, what does it look like? And then, of course, you'll hear from some of the students and the staff about the benefits and the highlights.
I love mentor group because I love connecting with new kids that I don't know very well. And it's been such a great addition to Marsden this year because it allows for different teachers to have different groups of kids and the kids to get to know each other across all grade levels. So, with mixing third, fourth, and fifth graders, the kids are able to be positive role models for each other, learn from each other, and get to know each other better across the whole school. So, that's one of the benefits. We really love using it as an opportunity for connection and belonging and making all kids feel more welcome within the whole Marsden community rather than just their classroom or their grade. So, it's been a wonderful addition. I really enjoy doing all different activities with my group. We did a headbands competition last week and played headbands game and it was just really fun and it's a great opportunity to have 25 minutes to just have a nice time and connect with students outside of academia. Tell me about your mentor block.
So, we have a theme in our mentor block. It's card games and we get to play different card games every week and it's just really fun.
And what do you like most about mentor block? Besides the card games?
I like most that it's like, like, whoa. I like most that like everyone's nice in there and everyone's really funny.
I like that we get to like meet new teachers and new kids at the school, like fourth grade, fifth grade.
Fun fact, the capital of this state is Carson City.
Carson?
Teachers, anyone?
Nevada.
It's Nevada. There you go.
It's really, it's really fun to be with like other kids from other grades because they can like tell you the stuff they do in other grades and it's just really fun to socialize with them.
We, everybody just happy at mentor group. There's a lot going on in my mentor group. It's just like the best thing.
One of the big reasons we have the mentor block is to give students throughout the school another resource, another trusted adult that they can go to and speak with and make a connection with. It just builds our school community, just makes our school community a lot stronger.
And what has been your favorite activity so far?
I have a few favorite activities so far. One of them was brought to us by one of the students in the mentor group, which is, we called it tape painting, where we just put some tape on some watercolor paper and then made really cool designs. It was a very relaxing Zen-like activity. The other one that I really liked is we made Ublek stress balls using Ublek and balloons. And we talked a little bit about how these can just help us to relax and focus and so really taking the idea of the mentor block as sort of a social, emotional learning opportunity and doing an activity that goes along with that. So, it was really fun.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The mentor meetings. What about you guys?
I like the games and meeting new people.
Yeah, that works.
I like meeting new teachers and stuff.
I like meeting new kids.
I like meeting new kids and teachers.
So, I'm here with some third graders and they're gonna talk about what their favorite thing about mentor block is. Who wants to go first? Go ahead.
I think people should know about mentor block in different schools because you get to meet more friends in different grades and you can have a little break time of school.
Anybody else wanna add to that?
I think it's good to have mentor because like it's just fun, like you get to do fun activities and like sorta instead of like brain learning, social learning.
Great. Go ahead.
Um, so mentor, mentor group is a good thing because like you have more time to get outside sometimes and it's very fun and you get to meet more people.
People should know about mentor group and other like states and stuff because you get to learn about more teachers, you get to see your friends more often, you get to go outside. Yeah, you get to take a break from learning.
I think people should know about mentor group because I think that other schools should get to experience meeting with older and younger kids in the school.
I think other schools should learn about mentor group because it's an opportunity to meet more kids for your age and you get to see them and you're always super excited to go.
That's mentor block in a nutshell. We're open to questions or comments or anything moving forward.
Board, have any questions, comments? Thank you.
Can I, can I just say one thing? First off, thanks for sharing that with us. I do think that going back to even a previous, how the evening started, I think, again, it's another way that we're looking at the social, emotional learning of our students and by giving them a community within a community, again, children feel like there is another adult in addition to their classroom teacher that they can go to and speak with. So, I do think it's just another layer that we're putting in place for our children to, first off, to make them feel safe, but also to give them another community of not just, you know, children in their own grade level, but really cross-grade level groupings. So, I think it's just a tremendous benefit to the students in the community at Marsden. So, thanks for sharing that with us. Love the video.
Thank you very much.
Para substitutes? This was an item I think you wanted on?
Oh, yes, yes. I brought this up. I'd like to know what, what we do with paras that have one-on-ones and then they're asked to sub. So, can somebody clarify that for me? So can somebody clarify that for me?
Yeah, I would think.
The Academy.
So when they're asked to sub in regular, for the regular teachers, you mean?
Yeah, well, we have a number of subs to utilize and work with students. Okay? And they're in the classrooms constantly. Yet we're asking them to sub. And I'm trying to understand why we're taking them away from time that's needed with, to be on a one-on-one or with their students that they're assigned to for the IEPs.
If, if, if we ever at Hampton Academy, I can't speak for the other schools.
I know we have a problem with subs, so.
If we get into a situation where we're in need of a sub, one of the things that we've done is that say, we have a student who has, or a student who has a one-on-one and they're not there, say for the day, they're absent, then we would utilize that person to fill in the spot that we need coverage.
Okay, so we're not utilizing the, I wouldn't pull any students.
Right, no, no, their, their coverage comes first. That's the priority. If the student is not there, then we would utilize that person to go in and cover a classroom. And per their CBA, the, there's, there's written in there compensation for half day or a full day.
Okay, so if I understand this correctly now, you have a para that comes in for the day, her one-on-one, her students not in school, then you're utilizing it, utilizing that person or body for, as a sub?
Correct.
Right, okay.
Thank you, Ken.
Can, can I make a comment on, in regards to, I know it's under new business, but before we go into renomination draft, I just want to make a clarification. I realize that I was not at the deliberative session last week, but I did view it on YouTube from start to finish. And I was a little taken back by some of the comments that were made, but I want to make a statement for clarification.
But I think the more appropriate time to do that is when we go over the minutes of the deliberative session.
Oh, that's fine.
Correct? Okay.
Do we have the minutes of the deliberative session?
No, we, no, but when we go over them.
We have minutes in there?
Not of the deliberative session, but we will at some point.
No, I think, I'd like to make the comment now.
Oh, go ahead, Frank.
Okay. There was a comment made on the deliberative session when we were discussing, when the group was discussing Article Five of the petition that was brought forward by a gentleman on the Budget Committee regarding my statement during the Budget Committee by Mr. Quinn. Okay, for clarification purposes, my comment was made to a member of the Budget Committee that had asked that the school board review its budget and see if they could cut $1 million from its budget overall. And my comment to that individual was that where would I cut or where would the board cut $1 million because as everyone knows, we approved contracts a year ago that created that increase in that the only, since the board looked at the overall budget, which is predominantly made up 80% plus is personnel and benefits. So if we were to look at reducing it by $1 million, that would impact teachers and administrators. We would have to let go of people to meet the $1 million cost. By doing so, if you eliminate teachers, i.e. classroom teachers, then you're going to increase the load, student load per class, okay, which is a double-edged sword because then our cost would increase because we would not have the personnel needed to teach those students and you would have 30 kids in a classroom instead of 22. So that was my comment for clarification. It was not that it would add a million dollars to the budget as it was quoted if we had more students. So that was what I wanted to clarify.
Okay, thank you. You folks have a packet with renominations. I, I don't believe we vote on these because we don't have a budget. But they're for your perusal. And I guess if you have any questions or concerns, you can contact Lois.
Yes.
Can I?
We're, we're not going to talk about people.
No, no, in general, in general, not talking about people. But since we have a retirement coming forward, I would hope that we take steps forward now rather than later, that we post and look for positions, those two positions which are critical to the district.
Or psychologist in assistance? I'm glad to hear that.
Okay, so, so folks have that, but we will need to bring these to the next meeting, which is on March 21st, which is on March 21st, we'll take action on these. It's not too late, is it?
No, I think we're fine. Is that when you're going to reschedule?
I'm like, do we need to talk about rescheduling to the 21st?
We don't really because we don't, well, I mean, we can. We're certainly not going to meet on voting day, which is the 14th.
We just hadn't talked about it.
We always go, we always go to the following Tuesday, which is 21st.
It is the same night as the PTA meeting.
That's okay.
It is, but.
We can figure that out. We can divide and conquer.
And we should make sure the room is available because that has been an issue. That's held at center, right? Is that at center though, right? Okay.
I still think we can make it work.
Yeah.
It's typically the 21st.
Yeah. So I was just going to remind everybody that voting day was March 14th, so we just brought that up. And I appreciate everybody that was at the deliberative session supporting the school and the budget. I will have the annual report also on our website by Friday. If there, we have all the information up, the, our budget, the MS-27 and everything on our website right now, so everybody has access to any of that. If there's any questions or you can't find that, please feel free to give me a call. If there's any questions and you need some clarification, please feel to give me a call. A month will happen fast, so please look through the information and feel free to contact me. Annual report again is at the Library Town Hall and at all three schools and will be on our website. Other than that, we got through our yearly reports and we are on the next, waiting for the budget to go through or not, and then I will be working on contracts. So, all is good.
Questions from Mariah?
Yes.
Andrea?
Other expenses on page seven. Let me see, page seven. Other expenses for... Ah, yes, I do see that. I would have to look for detail. I can look, um, I could do it before, I can look it up right now. So once we get before the end, I will get back to you. Yes, definitely.
Any other questions from Mariah?
We will have to start making sure that we are contacting the parents, seeing what we can do. Mary's department should be doing that. Yep, um, and then we will have to have a conversation to handle that at the end of the year.
Any other questions from Mariah? Oh, okay, we have some policies to look at.
We do.
A lot of them.
Yep.
Kathy Tuck is cranking them out, isn't she?
Just great, that's what we want.
Okay.
So, we have BCB, first read. In, in fact, should I mention all the first reads or just, we, we'll just leave those? And we'll try to go to the second reads. We've had a bunch that have been withdrawn.
Yes.
And second read, the first one that I see is the student dress code revision, which is JICA. This is a second.
Page 101.
Page 101.
What about BYOD? Are we withdrawing that?
I think that's been withdrawn.
Right, right, okay, because it's outdated, correct?
Correct.
So, I gotta find page 101. Okay, student dress codes, G, JICA. This is a second read and it looks like the changes were put in from when we talked about it a little bit before.
Correct.
Can we get a motion on this? Moved Frank, second Wendy. Discussion, any discussion? So everyone's good with the student dress code? Okay, all those in favor? Five zero. I don't think there were any more second reads, so the rest of them are all first reads. So I would suggest that everybody bring these to the next meeting on March 21st.
Hey, Les? Can I ask the Policy Committee to go back and review our policy on ethics, personnel ethics and morals? And I'd like to look at them extending that to contractors and any other people that work for the district.
Who are our policy people?
Me and Jenny.
Jenny? All right, did you guys get what Frank's looking for?
Yes, and we'll have to look at it and see if we can do that.
And the reason I'm bringing that up is I was concerned back at the deliberative session where people that presented one Article Number Five were harassed by, harassed and, and ridiculed by members of the community that were opposed to Article Five. And I was hoping, and I'm hoping that those people were not part of the school district, which conveys a negative message of our stance because we are a community-based organization and everyone's opinion matters. We can agree to disagree.
Wendy?
I just have a question. So I, I felt like during the meeting, everyone was actually pretty respectful. So are you talking about their, their behavior at the meeting or are you talking about things that were done on social, done and said on social media?
Everything.
Well, I, I agree with you. I thought the meeting was pretty similar.
Because social media is its own issue. And there are First Amendment issues and, you know, we as a board have really specific guidelines for what we can and cannot say, but we have to be a little bit careful about policies related to what employees or contractors or whoever would say on social media.
I'm not looking at First Amendment rights, okay? I'm looking at if I disagree with you and I drive by your house and ridicule you.
Right.
Okay, or, or I put derogatory comments about you on social media, that's not an ethical moral behavior, okay? And if you're employed by this district, okay, I'm not taking away your rights to protest. I'm just taking the right on how you protest.
But we will take a look at it and see what the policy says and if there is a way...
We have an ethical moral behavior.
I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm saying we will, you've requested we look at it and I think that's fair.
Have a look at it.
We'll look at it and see what it says current, I don't, I don't know what it says currently. I don't know if Jenny does either and see if there's any way it needs to be expanded.
Yeah, we want to be careful about sticking our foot into that water.
Yes.
Okay, minutes, Tuesday, January 10th, regular meeting. Moved by Andrea? Seconded Wendy? Discussion? All those in favor? Jenny, yeah? Five zero. We had an on-public for January 10th. Get a motion on those? Moved Frank, seconded Andrea? Discussion? All those in favor? This form works pretty good for those, doesn't it?
Yeah. That's a good catch, Les.
Okay. Done the non-public, public comment, okay. Next meeting, I, Wendy's right, we should decide. I suggested March 21st. Is that good with everybody?
Mine would be.
Okay. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Oh, can I?
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry. What?
I, I want to answer Andrea.
One, two, three.
So it was John Guilford, our Public Relations for 8,388. We pay them every year to do the public relations. We've stuck it in that account. I believe we might have changed it in the new budget when we were discussing. I believe we did, but we didn't do it in this budget. They do letters, the newspaper, they, yeah, they, they have done a lot. Encouraging people to vote for the budget. Yeah, they've done that. If we have contracts, they would. Yep. Issues, they try to catch issues before they get out of hand.
Jenny, you were next.
Yes, because I believe and have supported equal opportunities for children and families to do that and also because of my appointment, I am resigning. So Andrea is there, I am not, I will not be a part of it.
Your microphone?
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Well, that's...
No, I cannot.
No, I certainly won't try to change your mind, but it's your voice.
It's the first time I've ever resigned from a committee in 30 years of government, but I'm going to do that.
Your, your knowledge and especially in preschool far exceeds mine. Is there someone else that would like to replace even though you're irreplaceable? What? Yeah, but I thought we had two.
Andrea was kind of the backup.
Okay, well, we'll leave it at that for now and see what happens when we reorganize. Any other?
We just need to ask if there's any public comment on agenda. Last one, we gotta...
Any more pa, comment?
I know, he's got to say the words anyway.
Wendy's absolutely right. We, we need to do that each time. She's good to remind me of that.
Yes. Yes. So there was... There were, sorry. The, the play is the same weekend as the concert that they are doing, which can... The, the play is the same weekend as the concert that they are doing, which combines the high school students with all of the middle school students. So number one, there was some initial, this was a, it was a Facebook thing. Somebody asked a question. Number one, there was originally a concern because a parent who had a middle school student and a high school student got notifications that they both had concerts on the same night. And the parent didn't understand that it was the same concert.
Gotcha.
And then also the play is that same weekend. There was just a request.
Oh, the May, the March one, the March play.
Yes, so there was, there was.
And then it went on to parent teacher conferences.
Yes, so there was just a request that.
I don't know how we fix that, but we should try.
Levine, who you tried so hard to set up a calendar that would help with this, correct? So that there would not be these conflicting calendar dates? We tried really hard.
But I say 21 is tough.
I know all the new things.
Yep.
So if they were aware.
Yeah, that's where it gets tricky.
Right. They did plan.
Yep.
They added another play.
So if they decided all that last spring, when did all that go into the, it's the district calendar that it goes into, right?
It goes into the.
Okay.
It doesn't go out in the district.
So I think as a parent, also as somebody who works at the library, I used to have issues trying to schedule big events and then find out two weeks later, like everybody else. When we want to schedule something, we have to make sure nobody's using the room and then we have to make sure nobody else is having an event. And then we have to make sure there isn't a first grade concert scheduled the night of Polar Express, which has happened. And so I would think people, the people would want that information as soon as possible. I would say there are parents who would be happy if the first week of school, if they would know, if it's available, when all of the concerts are going to be, when the school play is going to be.
That would be lovely.
And some of that doesn't get planned until later. And I'm 100% aware of that. But if it's stuff that's getting planned out a year ahead of time, if we could put it on the calendar where everybody could see it, I, there are some parents I know who would really appreciate it.
Seems like we don't always know that in a, in a year advance.
Right.
That's where it gets tricky and sticky.
I just wanted to let parents know that we didn't forget that. We were pursuing it. But sometimes it's just.
Yep.
They've got feeder schools.
That they have to.
Work with that and coordinate it.
Correct.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn. Moved, Frank. Seconded, Wendy. All those in favor? Thank you.